Before I turn it over to the League in Maryland, a couple of other people I want to thank. First, I want to thank Lloyd and Charter Communications for taping our Candidates' Forum today. It's going to be rebroadcast on the local cable access channel. A big thank you to Charter for their support.[61.12][61.12](APPLAUSE). And then I wanted to take just a couple of seconds to thank all the candidates. Obviously, it's a big step to run for an office like this and be kind of supporting your community and try to do all you can for the community. And so to be available, to participate in the Candidates' Forum, and let people of our community and businesses hear from you is we appreciate your participation. So, big thanks to the candidates for participating.[87.61][87.61](APPLAUSE). With that, I'm going to turn it over to Maryland, who's going to start the Candidates' Forum for the League.
Oh, thank you. It's always good to be back in West Richland. I spent a good portion of my childhood at the golf course, way back when it was just starting, as did Lloyd. Troy has mentioned the Coalition, so I won't go into all of that. We'll get right to the forum. We're going to try and keep it to about 45 minutes. And if somebody has to leave, just try and maybe stay out of the camera views and depart quietly if you need to. We will be taking written questions from the audience. There are two League members sitting. Raise your hand, Marjorie and Polly. They can either give you a card or collect a card if you have a question that you'd like to submit. We welcome questions from the audience. We have some prepared, that the Chamber has prepared, and the rest of the Coalition. But we would like extra questions. We have limited the opening, closing, and answers to the question to all to a minute and a half. So, they have to, you know, get their thoughts out quickly, and we will keep moving as quickly as we can. The League is a nonpartisan organization, and we neither oppose or endorse any candidate, ever. But it's our goal and the goal of our sponsoring partners to provide opportunities like this for voters to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. And today, we will be hearing, obviously, from these six candidates who are running for the West Richland City Council. At this time, I would like to introduce them. And we have for position five, Merle Johnson and Robert Perks. For position six, we have Ken Dobbin and Ron Hayden. And position seven, we have Tony Benegas and Joanne Curtis. And we will begin with opening statements. And this was determined by whose birthday must end date, not year.[219.12][219.12](LAUGHTER). Closest to mine. And so whoever that was, they got their first choice on the order. And so with opening statements, we're going to begin with position five and Mr. Johnson.
Ready to roll? Good afternoon. Thanks for all turning out. So, who is Merle Johnson? I'm a father of five. I'm a grandfather of six. I'm a businessman, and I'm a U.S. veteran. In the community, I'm the president of the Board of Leadership Tri-Cities. I'm the president of Ignite Mentoring. And I'm the vice president of Habitat for Humanity. And I'm on the Board of Directors of Boys and Girls Club. In the city of West Richland, I've brought Sharefest to the city for six years. I'm the treasurer of the Lions Club, and I'm a member of the Chamber. On the council, I'm a fiscal conservative. And my voting record over the last six years, I think if any of you'd like to look into it, speaks to who I am as a fiscal conservative. We are going into troubled times, as everybody knows, and dollars are very, very tight in the city of West Richland. So, I look forward to serving you the next four years and keeping an eye on your money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll hear from your opponent, Robert Perks.
She naps me as Robert Perks. You probably see my signs. It's Bob Perks. That's what my friends call me. And I hope I can call you guys my friends. Who is Bob Perks? I've got a counter on my website. None of you have been there. I can tell. So, I'll tell you what it says.[323.33][323.33](LAUGHTER). You might know me as Coach Bob. If you go to YMCA games, you'll see me out there screaming and yelling and sweating, unfortunately. You might know me as the den leader, Bob, or you've seen us cleaning up Keene, walking down the street. You might know me as Dr. Bob. I work here in town. In fact, you know, on that note, I apparently didn't get the suit jacket memo. I showed up in my work clothes. And that's what I promised to do for you guys. Every day, I'll show up in my work clothes. Like Merle said, we're heading into uncertain times. Okay? It's going to get tough. And we've got rules and parameters that are going to make it difficult to get ahead. I'm a business owner. I'm a father. I have to have a budget. And I have to make that budget. I've got people who count on me every month to pay their rent, to make their car payments, every month. And I've been able to do it. And I'd like to be able to do it for you guys. That's me, Bob Perks.
Thank you. And we'll move on to position six, and we'll begin with Mr. Dobbin.
Good afternoon, West Richland. As your councilman, Ken Dobbin's continuing mission is to meet your expectations for a livable community. What that takes, since you want a rural environment with health, safety, and fiscal responsibility as main attributes, that takes teamwork and it takes fiscal responsibility. As such, if someone that does that for year after year as your councilman can best represent you and best do that. It's teamwork. For example, it takes Benton County Fire District Number Four, the city and citizens to provide health, life, and safety for our community. I've been council liaison to Benton Four for nine years and worked on the committees that built Station 420, provided 24/7 firefighter presence, and our new ambulance. For schools, we like to have schools next to our neighborhoods. That takes teamwork between the Richland School District, the city, utilities, and citizens to make that happen. I've worked on the committees to get Wiley School and Enterprise Middle School built here in West Richland. For fiscal responsibility, that's more than just passing a balanced budget or saying no new taxes. What that takes is looking ahead for liabilities that can cause future expenses of the city.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Mr. Hayden.
Well, first of all, thank everyone for showing up. Thank you to all the people who have hosted this event and have sponsored this event. It really does mean a lot to me to speak to you today. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm 27 years old. I'm a lifelong resident of Tri-Cities, and I graduated from Comaike High School. After graduating, I joined the United States Army. I went to and I graduated from the United States Army Intelligence School. And then I served two tours in Iraq. My service in the military has earned me two Army Accommodation Medals, an Army Achievement Medal, and the recommendation for a Bronze Star. My professional career is in law enforcement. I work as a full-time Hanford patrolman as a member of a tactical response team. I am running for city council because I want to make a positive difference for this city. I see the problems that we have, and I have new ideas and new leadership abilities that I believe can solve these problems. People move here for a reason. We have a beautiful environment. We have a safe community. We have small-town values that I really do believe need to be preserved. Most importantly, again, I bring new leadership abilities, new ideas, and the fresh perspective that I believe is needed on our council as we move forward into the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we will finish up with position seven and begin with Mr. Benegas.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. When I ran four years ago, I ran because I had a lot of passion and energy, and I had a plan. And I still do. One of the things I want to make sure is that your voice is being heard and that we're moving together towards a better city with one voice. And what I mean by that one voice is the Economic Development Board, the Park Boards, the Planning Commission, the city council. Are we all on the same page? Because sometimes we're not. And we're working on it, and I think we're getting there. And the reason we need to do that is the city of West Richland is growing and changing. That's inevitable. But what isn't is progress. And that's something we need to work together on and take some doing. But I think we can get it. I think we can get it there. As a councilman and as a businessman, I have to think and plan strategically, looking far out into the future. What are we going to do with Red Mountain, Belmont, Van Giesen? But work with what we have today, the ordinances and the budget. Oh, yes, the budget. That's a really critical eye that we need to keep an eye on. And I'm very diligent in looking at that. That diligence allowed me to find a $254,000 grant to spruce up the entrance of West Richland. That's never been done before. I'm a business guy. I need to get things done. I was able to do that because I have teaming abilities, building relationships. And these are tight times, folks. And we need to team with our fellow cities and counties to get things done, to get the services that you expect. And I ask for your support to continue doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final opening statement is from Ms. Curtis.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I'm Joanne Curtis, and I've been a West Richland resident for 20-plus years. I came up here in high school and graduated from Hanford High, and then I returned to California from my early family life and college career. Over these 20-plus years, I've seen the community grow from about 2,900 people to where we're at now. And in that time, I've been able to serve the community as part of the Economic Development Board. And my role in that, I was able to work with the Department of Commerce for the state of Washington to help bring in the grant that allowed Pacific Rim to be housed out here with the Port of Kennewick as our partner. I also am serving currently on the Planning Commission for the city as well. I do believe in economic development. That was my early career before I joined Washington State University. And we need to hear everybody's voice, not just one or two people. We would need to be able to understand, as you can tell, when the community grows from 2,900 to about 12,000 now, there's a lot of voices that haven't been heard. And we see that constantly in our meetings that we have in our community. It's essential that we do listen to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start the questions, we didn't double-check. I noticed most of you have something to drink. Is there anybody that doesn't have something that would like some water? Or is everybody... Oh, some of you are hiding yours. Okay. We're good to go.[740.63][740.63](LAUGHTER). Will... This is a fairly easy question, so I think we'll have all the candidates answer it. And we'll begin with position five with Mr. Perks. Do you believe in term limits for council members? And if so, how many terms do you think a council member should serve?
In general, I'm for term limits. I would say yes. I believe two terms would be appropriate.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson?
Well, term limits mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. You know, the president has got two terms on it, and the Congress and the Senate doesn't. And that's created a lot of problems. Mr. Dobbin's has been on the city council for a long time, and I appreciate his wisdom and knowledge. So, in a lot of aspects, I would say no. I appreciate the knowledge that has been accrued over the years. And so, term limits in the city, I wouldn't say no.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to position six and Mr. Hayden.
Well, I certainly do believe in term limits. I think it's absolutely important that we have continuously new ideas and a fresh perspective as we move forward. The incumbent I am challenging has been in the same position for 18 years. That's a long time. That's nearly two decades. I was nine years old when he first started on city council. And I don't really say that to make a joke. It's a serious issue to me. As far as term limits go, I think two to three terms maximum. That's where I stand.
Okay. Then we'll let Mr. Dobbin share his ideas.
Yeah. Term limits are determined by you, the citizens. When we can no longer serve you here, then you vote us out. So, in my opinion, term limits are when you, the citizens, say that we can no longer serve you, and then we're done. We also need to evaluate ourselves. Can we continue to serve you during the time? And when... Get to the point where we believe that we cannot do the job, then we need to bow out ourselves. For my particular situation, since it was brought up here, I believe that I have a long track record of serving the citizens of West Richland. And I have an experience base that is going to be very valuable, looking ahead so that we don't have liabilities in the future that we don't see now. Experience allows you to foresee what's coming and then try to avoid that type of expenses in the future. So, anyway, you guys determine when the term limits are by voting us out at your desire.
Marjorie, move.[910.12][910.12](LAUGHTER). Sorry. Had somebody in the line of the camera. Okay, but we have a question. Okay. And we'll finish up with position seven and let Mr. Benegas go first.
Same question?
Same question.
Term limits. I'm kind of a little torn on that. If you ask my wife, definitely yes for term limits. But I know that it's pretty hard. The power of the incumbency speaks very strongly. And sometimes, I think it's better to get new and fresh blood in, just because sometimes we that serve maybe lose perspective after a little bit. And we kind of should step aside and let other citizen legislators take our place. So, I would say yes, I believe in term limits, two to three terms.
Okay. And Ms. Curtis?
I don't believe in term limits. I think it's the citizens' voice that tells people when they need to leave. We saw that in our last election. The citizens made the choices to do that. If you're a member of whatever bodies that's serving your community, your state, that U.S. citizens get that right to elect them or not elect them. That's the choice that citizens are given.
Okay. Thank you. I think with our next question, we'll go to position six first. And this is also from the audience. And we'll just have you answer it, and then we can get in more questions. The question is, "West Richland is a multimillion-dollar corporation with a CEO, mayor, directors, the council, and stakeholders or taxpayers. The city has never provided work schedules and performance data to the taxpayers on any scheduled basis." The question is, "How will you ensure this basic financial and performance data is provided to the taxpayer frequently?" And we will begin... Mr. Dobbin, I'm sorry. You'll be the first one to answer.
Okay. Currently, that information is available. It's provided to council and in council packets on a periodic basis. I think the real question is, is there a better way of presenting it so that you don't have to thumb through an inch worth of paper to get to it? And what I would really desire here is to have you, the citizens, come to council and ask, "Can we present this information in the following way, in a way that you would understand?" And so, my response is, we need to have a dialogue between citizens and council members and the mayor, obviously, since the mayor is the CEO of the city. How can we present that information that is all available on a periodic basis? How can we present it in a more understanding way?
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Hayden?
Well, I agree a lot with what Councilman Dobbin said. I think there is a lot more that our city can do to let the citizens know exactly what's going on, as far as what the council is doing and what the commissions are doing. I think we could use technology a lot in a lot of ways that could help promote this, like our website, like our newsletters. I think our newsletters and the bill that you get every month with the little newsletter about what's going on in the city, I think that's a great way to let people know what's going on with the council. And if they have concerns about financial issues, which I think all of us do, and we're going to address that at a council meeting, I think we need to bring that up in the form of that newsletter or some form, like the website, and allow the citizens to know what's going to actually happen at one of those council meetings so that they could come and attend and learn themselves. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to position seven and take a little different approach to a similar question from the chamber. And we're going to begin with Ms. Curtis. "How would you define your role in developing and maintaining fiscal responsibility if elected?"
Could you say that again, one more time?
Oh, sure. I'll try to even go slower.
Okay.
"How would you define your role in developing and maintaining fiscal responsibility if elected?"
The role of the council member would be, we're the ones that authorize the payments. So, we would take the budget that is forecasted by staff and maintain it in a manageable way. We do have... The city does carry a reserve, and we would want to make sure that the council all agrees on what that reserve should be, so it doesn't impact us mid-year or at the end of the year. Frequently, our budgets always has been, in the last five years that I've been attending council, been adjusted frequently. But it's our job as council members to maintain ourselves within that balanced budget and to make sure that all our systems are working properly and that we have the right information from city staff.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move up to... or come back to position five here. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I... Oh, I didn't crush your name off, and there it is. Mr. Benegas, sorry about that.
Okay. And the question was, "How will we maintain fiscal responsibility?"
Yeah. "How would you define your role in developing and maintaining fiscal responsibility?"
Thank you. The councilman's role in establishing responsibility really relies in the budget process. We rely on staff to develop their goals in terms of what we defined as councils, our goals overall as a city, which we get input from you. And to further that, we develop... We have subcommittees, where we look at different aspects of the city: utility committee, planning, finance. And really, the bottom line as a councilman, it's incumbent upon us to, when we hear back the reports from the different committees of the council, is to ask questions. You know, is this really necessary? Does this meet the priorities and goals that we of a council have established? Is this is what's important to the city? And we get this kind of input, like surveys. We just did a great, big, huge citywide survey. What's important to you? And we've done surveys before, but this is the first time we've ever done a scientific survey. So, we got a great idea of what you folks are thinking. And with those tools, that's how a councilman will sit down, and that's how I sit down, look at the budget, line by line, all 50, 100 pages of it, and see, is this meeting what the citizens expect?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. So, we will finish up our second question with position five, and we'll begin with Mr. Johnson. And this is another question from the chamber. "If you are elected, how will you stay connected with the citizens and businesses?"
Well, I have been connected with the citizens for the last six years. I've enjoyed being a lion. And we are the only service organization left in this community. We put on the concerts. We help with the parade. We clean Van Giesen. We help the seniors. We help with kids that need glasses. So, my role in the community has been very diverse and have been all around. I help Bill with the seniors, and he helps me with Sharefest. And being a council member doesn't mean I go to the meetings on Tuesday night and then I disappear the rest of the week. Many of you know and you see me all around the community. The Cushman is a telling tale of where I am and where I'm going. For those of you who don't know, is I have a little three-wheel Cushman that I get around town in and able to deal with the citizens. Most of the issues in the community are not dealt by 12,000 people. Most of the issues are dealt with specific issues that are relating specifically to those people's neighborhoods and their problems. And that's a councilman's job, is to be able to define those issues, to be able to help them with their problem, such as building a dam up by the high school, which was taken care of by citizens coming to the council meetings and saying, you know, is that the safest thing to have?
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Perks, do you have a plan? Have you thought about how you'll stay connected?
Well, a lot of it goes back to my original answer and all the different names you can call me in public. Like, I'm doing the Scouts. I'm doing the YMCA. Those of you that went to the Harvest Festival, you probably saw me there. You may not have seen me, but you saw my booth. We did the toilet paper toss. I didn't use it as a big advertising opportunity. There wasn't a big, grand one, "Come to Dr. Perks' office." It was giving back. It was for the community. It was for the kids. We were giving out prizes. You've probably seen this wave. I had the Cairo Kids or my little bucky that goes through in the parade. I'm involved in the community. You know, I'm back to... My kids go to school here. I have an unfair advantage in keeping with the community. As a healthcare provider, I get 100 of you guys a week through my office. People come in. I get to sit down. I get to talk. I get to share. And that gives a great opportunity because it's different people. It's not just the guys I go to church with. It's not the friends I hang out with on the weekends. It's not the guys from my ball team. It's everybody. It's a good mix of all of us. And that's how I stay connected.
Okay. Thank you. This being a chamber luncheon, we'll move on a little bit to some of the economic development questions. And we'll begin with position seven and Mr. Benegas. You get to go first, so you won't be forgotten. This is, again, from the audience. It is, "Which of the following economic developments efforts would you favor? Number one is retail, which would increase the tax base but not necessarily provide high-paying jobs. Or two, the industrial, which would not provide as broad a tax base but would or could provide higher-paying jobs?"
Those two, one or the other.
Well, that's what it says. Which of the... Would you favor?
Oh. Well, I'm going to take the politician's answer and say I favor them all. We need to be strategic and teaming as how we're going to approach businesses. We cannot choose a business that's going to succeed. We don't know. I have a business. I've been in business for five or six years. I have 10 employees. But if you'd have known me six, seven years ago, could you look at me and say, "That business is going to be successful"? You don't know. It's up to an individual. Retail has its advantages. It's easier to set up. Light industrial can bring in the better kind of jobs that our citizens say they like for our survey. So, I'm going to say I like them both. We need to build the infrastructure to support whatever we want to build together as a community. And I really think that's what we need to think about, is what kind of city do we want to look like? Where do we want to be? And I think that's my job, to find out from you. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Curtis?
I'm taking Tony's politician thing, and we need both. When I served on the Economic Development Board for the city of West Richland, we tossed this question around, which do we need? We need them both. We cannot ignore one over another. Our community is well set to have both with our partnership with the Port of Kennewick in the west end of town. We have a lot of opportunity for light industrial areas, as we see with Pacific Rim and the distillery out there already. And on the retail side, we do have some available properties all along Van Giesen. It's all commercial. And the opportunity for anybody that wants to come into our community and set up a retail space, that's available to them as well. There's some spaces out there, out on Kennedy and right adjacent to Cadillac property out there. That's commercial as well. So, there's ample opportunity to have both in our area. And we can't ignore one over another. We have to focus on both.
Okay. This... Another question from the audience for position five, and we'll begin with Mr. Perks. "In our rapidly growing community, how do you envision economic development that can both promote growth and balance that with the preservation of the rural lifestyle that many residents favor?"
I've been on the Planning Commission for about three years. Really, that's a zoning and planning issue. We need to make sure that our retail, you know, stays in the proper area. We've got a comprehensive plan. We've got a GMA. We've got lots of things that control how and where the city can grow. We need to make sure that we have effective corridors, so we can put our retail in the same places where people can find it, you know, where they can get down and walk and do those things to stay a community. We have great pockets of rural right now. You know, certainly, I wouldn't go put a strip mall in the middle of those. They bring value to the area. Really, effectively, from that question, it's really zoning and how you space it.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. The comprehensive plan is a six-year endeavor for the citizens to take a look at and say, "Okay, if I move the city of West Richland, I want to live over here in the rural part. I see that the commercial is all over here." The one thing that the citizens don't realize, and it's misfortunate, is the comprehensive plan changes constantly. So, you may have thought you built your house in a nice rural setting, and the next thing you know, you have either a strip mall or an apartment complex in your backyard. And citizens take offense to that because the comprehensive plan laid out that they weren't going to do that. So, you know, as a council member, I've been very tight on how this city has grown. My votes have been against a lot of things that have interfered with what everybody says when they come to the city of West Richland, and that is, I moved here for the quality of life. Your quality of life is different than somebody else's. But I guarantee you, if you build something... But I guarantee you, if you build something up in North Lake Drive, or if you put in sewer system up there, you are going to ruin somebody's quality of life. So when we look forward, we have to look forward as to what you moved here for. And you have to pay attention to the quality of life that has already been here and that what makes this city livable.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr., oh, you've both answered, okay. We'll have a slightly, there are just so many areas to cover, and our time is limited. So for position six, we'll shift a little bit. Mr. Hayden, you'll go first. This voter would like to know what you intend to do if elected about code enforcement and animal control. Those are always important issues.
Well, as far as code enforcement and animal control, I realize that those are issues that are commonly brought up at city council meetings, especially loud barking dogs. These are everything, you know, everything that are issues that people have, these are things that the council really needs to recognize. That there are, you know, as we were talking about quality of life, people want to have a quality of life here. They don't want to move here and have loud barking dogs next door, or their rural atmosphere diminished in any sort of way. So we really need to do, what we really need to do is listen to the people who come to our meetings, sincerely sit down with them and talk with them, figure out what they have to say, listen to their issues, and deal with them on a case-by-case basis. It's not a generalized thing to say, we just want a rural environment, so let's keep it that way. We've got to listen to everybody's point of views and everybody's perspectives and collectively listen to it case-by-case and then make the best decision possible. And that's really what, one of the things that I pledge to do, is listen to everybody, take everything into consideration, and use my best judgment.
Thank you. And Mr. Dobbin?
Yeah, thank you. The council recently changed the way our ordinances read regarding barking dogs. And we did that because our police department said they had trouble enforcing what our old code required them to do. And that was a result of citizen input and working with our police department to do that. What we need to continue to do, this is not going to be a static situation, we need to continue to work both with citizens and our police department to make sure that we have a doable ordinance when it comes to animal control. And I don't see that we're necessarily right there yet, but we've been working really hard to maintain the standard of living that you guys are asking us to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have for questions, and I think we've gotten through all the questions but one. And I will read this, and maybe you can incorporate it in your closing statement. It's probably appropriate to have some of this information. And it's, teaming and collaboration are important for council members. As such, can you name some of your endorsements or groups that you have successfully worked with? So this is going to be part of your closing statement, if you can squeeze it in, because nine times one and a half is what, 13 and a half minutes? So we're not adding on that extra, any extra time. And we will come back to position five and begin with Merrell Johnson.
Okay. Well, again, I thank you for the opportunity to be here. If we are to have a better tomorrow, we need to have a council member that's thinking about it today. Many of you know and are frustrated with how government moves, is at a snail's pace. You come down one day and you complain about something, and six months later or a year later, you know, something changes. And you're frustrated. You know, on the city council, there's seven of us. There's seven different opinions, seven people thinking about the same thing. As a citizen, you are the stockholder. This is your community. This is your money. This is your town. I am there to represent you. I am there to keep an eye on your money. I am there to listen to your needs, and I am there to vote for you. The last six years, I've felt that I've held the line financially, in my votes, that is. We have gotten into some several problems in the past, and you need people, you need council members that are willing to go the extra mile, that are willing to pay attention to you, that are willing to say, no, we're not going to spend money on that. And I hope to be that council member for you for the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And your closing thoughts, Bob Perks?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I had a good time sharing my ideas, my view for the future here. I wish there had been more time, because there's a lot more to me. And I ask you to please go to my website, bobforwest.com. You'll see a list of the people that are involved with me. You'll also be able to see what I'm hoping to do. As a city, we've got to be fiscally responsive. He talked about vision. We're different places in the paradigm. I'm starting out, young family, this is my first house. I want to take care of it. I want to look out for it. It's great. I got to see my son go to kindergarten for the first time, and I'm seeing him go through our junior high. And hopefully, if we play our cards right, I'll get to see him go through our high school. This is a growing community. I have a perspective. I have somewhere that I want to be. I've done it. I've grown. I'd like that opportunity to help you guys. You know, Merrell likes to talk about fiscal conservativeness. I have to make the budget every month, you know. I'm not a spendthrift. It's, you know, I've got that 93, you know, we talked about the Cushman, I've got the 93 truck out there. It's white, kind of dirty. It's really nice not to have payments. You know, it's nice to be careful. And I promise to bring that same thing to you. Let me bring my work close, let me get something done for you. Bob Perks.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to position six, and Rodden Hayden will give his closing statement first.
Well, again, I want to thank everyone for being here, everyone who sponsored this event, and everyone who's hosted this event. Thank you very much. This has been a very, very humbling experience, this whole campaign has. Again, I'm campaigning because I believe that I provide new leadership abilities, new ideas, and a fresh perspective that is needed on our city council, especially regarding issues with our budget. I too, I am a fiscal conservative. Fiscal responsibility is absolutely important to me, so is being accountable. As far as endorsements go, I'll go ahead and list a few. Washington State Senator Jerome Delvin has endorsed my campaign. That's important because we need to have elected leaders representing our city, but also be represented on the legislative side of the state. I'm also endorsed by Benton County Commissioner Sean Small. He's the newest commissioner representing Benton County, and I think that's absolutely important as well, to have representation on the county level. Just recently, I was endorsed by the Home Builders Association of Tri-Cities. We're talking about economic growth and development. I actually have a three-step economic growth plan. I don't have enough time to really get into it, but I encourage you to go to my website. It's haydenforwestrichland.com. Come speak to me afterward. Ask me questions through my website. I'm happy to answer them. I'm happy to meet with any of you. Again, this has been very humbling. I believe I provide new leadership abilities, new ideas, and a fresh perspective that's needed on our council. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I just realized I made a math mistake, but that's okay. You may get an extra minute or two to talk to the candidates afterwards. Okay, we will move on to Ken Dobbin's.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the West Richland Area Chamber of Commerce, and everyone else that was involved with putting on this event. And I want to thank the citizens of West Richland for listening to us. I hope that today you understand that experience is very important when you're talking about teamwork and fiscal responsibility. As far as endorsements go, I've been endorsed by the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1052. That's what allows me to put firefighter endorsed on my signs. I also have personal endorsements from state legislator Larry Haylor. I have three fire commissioners, business owners, a previous fire chief, planning commission member, and mayor who have served during the time I've been on the council. I also have family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers that avidly support my reelection. People are even ringing my doorbell, asking to put a sign in their lawn. That's fantastic. I want to continue to serve you and be able to use my experience for the betterment of West Richland. In order to do that, I need your vote, and your ballots are going to be coming out October 17th, that week, and you'll have until November 8th to mail them in. Again, please vote Ken Dobbin, position six. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And we have two more closing statements. And for position seven, we're going to start with Joanne Curtis.
Well, I thank everybody for putting this on today. It's been a wonderful time, and I liked the turnout, it was great. I'd like to say that in order to keep our quality of life here in West Richland, we need to have the citizens' voice be heard and put in such a perspective in a plan. We've had surveys done, we are working on plans at the city level, you hear that quite frequently. But what we really need is to understand what the citizens want. And I have served on the boards and the commissions for the past 10 years, and that's where we really get to hear their opinion and what they really would want to hear. And taking what I've learned in those positions, I could apply that to my position as a council member. Thank you.
Thank you. And I won't forget you this time, Tony Benegas.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone for being here, and thank you for the folks that are going to watch us in the future. I've been knocking on a lot of doors, and what I'm hearing from a lot of folks is, they like West Richland, they like living here. And they have all kinds of reasons. They came here because of the schools, they came here because they could afford a house here. They came here because they didn't like the restrictions and regulations of living somewhere else. And this is something that I'm going to continue to fight for, because I represent everyone. I have a lot of endorsements. I'll just start from the top and work my way down, or better yet, I'll start with Councilwoman Gail Brown, Councilman Brent Gary, State Senator Jerome Delvin, Representative Larry Haylor, Secretary of State Sam Reed, Attorney General Rob McKenna, Representative Brad Haylor. I could go on and on. The reasons I have all these endorsements, because I've been going out to a ton of meetings. And I think one of the other councilmen said it best, we go to a lot of meetings to represent you, to meet you, because we need to hear what you say. We all have different needs, and our job is to take those needs and take them and make them into actions and to do something with them. Joanne's absolutely right. We've had a ton of plans. I can guarantee you, the first settler that came here 100 years ago, came to the Akamal River, took off his boots, crossed it and said, gosh, we got to clean up Van Gisem. Enough with the plans, we need to move forward. I'm a business guy. I'm making it happen. I ask for your vote and support to continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to thank Troy especially for all his help in doing this. He's an easy person to work with. And I would like to thank Charter. As you can see, it's not an easy undertaking for them to go on site to make this available to more voters. Ballots will be mailed in two weeks, on October 19th. The drop boxes will be open the next day, so if you're anxious to vote. But if you want to make sure you're well informed and take your time, just make sure that you get your ballots in at one of the drop boxes by Election Day, which is November 8th, and/or postmarked by November 8th at the very latest. And I must say, for the auditor's sake, they like to get those ballots in. If you can get it in the Friday before, it gives them a chance to get them prepared and be ready to count on Election Day. If you know anyone that needs to register, they still have till October 10th to register by mail or online. People can register in person up to October 31st at the auditor's office. If you're new to the state or you've just never registered and meant to, if you've moved and haven't given the auditor your new address, that's important too. And you can call them and do that if you've moved within the county. If you're new to the county, then you have to re-register. But hopefully, all of you are prepared to be a good, responsible voter by this next election. I would like to thank all the candidates especially for their willingness to run and put their case before the voters. And I'll introduce them one more time. For position five, we have Merrell Johnson and Bob Perks. And it'll be Robert on the ballot, right? And for position six, we have Ken Dobbin and Ron Hayden. And for position seven, we have Tony Benegas and Joanne Curtis. And let's thank them for their, all their hard work.